...information forum 2024. Thank you so much for coming out. I am Reverend Barry Moultrie, a pastor of community engagement and social justice here at Mount Calvary. I know it looks like we don't have a lot of people here in the room, but I know there are people watching online. Doesn't matter. We're going to get what we need. We thank you candidates for coming out to be with us. I want to just offer a brief word of prayer because that's what we do here in our church, if y'all don't mind. Our Father and our God, we indeed thank you for this day and the time that you've given us. We're grateful, God, for this opportunity to be here. We thank you for these who feel called to public service and offer themselves up. We pray, God, that you would bless them, give them the words to say, help them to know their roles as public servants. Help us to challenge them, to ask them the appropriate questions that they might be moved to share in a manner that might help us all to make good decisions. We're grateful to you for what you do in this place today. Now bless us and bless this town. We thank you. Amen. So listen, this is just a really, really brief bit of housekeeping. We have restrooms right outside down the hall, men and women's restrooms. So if you feel you need to get up and go to restroom, do that. We are going to have three segments to this. First, we're going to have an opening segment where we're going to give information on the ballot. We're going to then call the candidates up, let them introduce themselves and share just briefly. Then we're going to go into a couple of pre-arranged questions, then the open community questions that were submitted. We will not take any questions. Please turn your phones off. We're going to use community questions that were submitted via email. We won't take questions here in the in the room. And then the last segment is something totally different that we're going to try, and we're going to allow them to have a roundtable discussion. They're going to talk among themselves a bit. We're just going to be flies on the wall and listen in. So having said that, let me introduce to you our moderator for this evening, Ms. Frances Frost. Many of you know her. She works in the school system. She's in AKA. We need to fix this microphone so that it doesn't keep slipping. And she is going to take us through this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Moultrie, and good evening. As he said, I'm Frances Frost. I'm a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and it's my pleasure to moderate this very important forum this evening. As he also said, I'm an employee of Montgomery County Public Schools and a parent of four MCPS graduates. So this candidate forum is very near and dear and important to me as a staff member, as a parent, and as a community member. So all of our hosts tonight, the first being Mount Calvary Baptist Church, we want to thank them for hosting this forum this evening. And the other co-hosts, as he mentioned, are Alpha Kappa Alpha Sororities, Phi Sigma Omega Chapter, and the Montgomery County Black Collective. All of our hosts for this forum are nonpartisan organizations based out of Montgomery County. So while the organizations and their members are residents of the county and have a vested interest in this race, they are nonpartisan organizations who are not favoring any candidate in this race or any of the other elected seats. So first of all, we want to remind everybody how to vote. So if you all are ready, we want to make sure that you share information with your family and friends. I'm going to make sure I know how to work this. So Montgomery County in Maryland offers you three ways to vote. Anyone over 18 years of age is eligible to vote. So registered voters have three options. They may request a mail-in ballot. Maryland, you have to request your ballot. You can do that up until October 29th if you want your ballot mailed to you, or you can do that up until November 1st if you want to receive it by the internet. So if you have students in college, if you have people in the military who are working in other states, if you will be on vacation during the election period, you can request a mail-in ballot to be delivered to you. The other option, which is becoming very popular, is the early voting centers. Early voting begins Thursday, October 24th, and runs through Thursday, October 31st from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day. There are 14 different voting centers around the county. You can go to any of those 14. You do not have to go to the one nearest your house or anything like that. They are not assigned. You can go to any of those. And then, of course, Tuesday, November 5th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. is General Election Day. You will go to your assigned polling place, and anyone who is in line at 8:00 p.m. is allowed to vote. So as long as you get there by 8:00 p.m., don't leave. They should allow you to vote even if it goes beyond 8 o'clock. There is same-day registration. Now that is available at your early voting centers and on Election Day. Go to the Board of Election website to make sure you have the right information on what information to take with you so that you can register to vote. On Election Day and on early voting, you will be able to take your sample ballot into the polls with you. However, you will not be allowed to take your phone. So make sure any notes that you need on who to vote for, which questions to vote for, you have them in writing on paper because you will not be able to take your phone into the election booth with you. All right. So now that we know when we're voting, everybody should have a plan. Think about your schedule. You know, do you have a doctor's appointment? Do you have to work? Are you going on vacation? So have a plan of what day you're going to vote. Now we're going to talk about what you are voting on. So the first question on your ballot will be this popular question. The President and Vice President of the United States, you will choose one of those options. The next is Senator for the state of Maryland. Everybody will select one of the options. The next is Representative in Congress. This happens to be District 8. We're sitting in District 8, but you may be in District 4 or you may be in District 6, depending on where you live. So your ballot may look different whether if you are in District 4 or 6. Everybody will have a option, and you will vote for one of them. Your next option is one that a lot of people don't pay attention to, right? But it's important. It's our judges. So you will vote on the judge of the Circuit Court and the appellate courts. I believe there are two judges for the appellate courts, or three, sorry. Three judges for the appellate court. And then at the bottom of the ballot, the last office up for election is the Board of Education. So it's important that you go to the bottom of your ballot. So the Board of Education in Montgomery County is made up of seven county residents elected by voters for four-year terms and one student member of the board that is elected by secondary students for a one-year term. Board members are elected countywide, but either serve the district in which they reside or are at-large members. Every two years, half of the board members are on the ballot for election. This year, we are voting for the at-large member and board members from District 2 and 4. All county residents will vote for all board members. So the first is the at-large candidates, Lynn Harris and Rita Montoya. District 2 is Brenda Diaz and Natalie Zimmerman. And then District 4 is Shebra Evans and Laura Stewart. So we'll talk a little bit more, obviously, this evening about them. And then importantly, this year, we have two questions on the ballot. Question 1 is an amendment to the Maryland Constitution for the Declaration of Rights, right to reproductive freedom. You will be voting for the amendment or against the amendment to confirm an individual's right to reproductive freedom. In the sample ballot mailed to your home or available online, there is an explanation of this amendment so you have a better understanding of the question that's being asked. You will vote for or against question 1. We also have question A. This is an amendment to the Montgomery County Charter regarding the term limit for the county executive. This amendment proposes to decrease the term limit for the county executive from the current amount, three terms, to two consecutive terms. If approved, this would impact the incumbent who has already served two consecutive terms as of December 2026. Again, you are voting for the amendment or against the amendment. So that is a summary of your sample ballot. We actually have a short ballot this year. But tonight, we are here specifically to hear from candidates for Montgomery County Board of Education. The Montgomery County Board of Education provides leadership and oversight for Montgomery County Public Schools by setting goals, establishing policies, and committing resources to benefit the diverse student population of over 160,000 students from pre-K through 12th grade in 211 schools. As stated, the Montgomery County Board of Education is made up of seven county residents elected by voters to serve a four-year term and a student representative. Again, this year, we're voting for at-large board member, board members from District 2 and District 4. So at this time, I invite all of our candidates to come and take their seats while I explain the rules for tonight's forum. I believe we're going to have the at-large first. At this first table, Ms. Lynn Harris and Rita Montoya. District 2 will be in the middle, Brenda Diaz and Natalie Zimmerman. And District 4 at the far table, Shebra Evans and Laura Stewart. For each question, the order in which candidates will respond will rotate so that everyone will get the honor of answering first and last. After the question is read, the timekeepers in front of you will raise a green placard indicating that the time is starting. The timekeeper will raise a yellow placard when the speaker has 15 seconds remaining, and when the speaker's time has expired, the timekeeper will raise a red placard. At that time, they will ring the bell, and candidates, please end your response promptly. We will be strict with time so that everyone has a chance to answer as many questions as possible. Your mics will be left on, so be mindful of any side comments. And for the first two segments, please address your comments and responses to the audience. All right. So, all right. Are we ready to begin? All right. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So to begin, we will have each candidate to introduce themselves. They will have 60 seconds to introduce themselves. We'll start with our at-large candidates, Lynn Harris and then Rita Montoya. Lynn, you can begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Harris, and I currently serve as an at-large member of the Montgomery County Board of Education. And when I ran for this seat in 2020, I was an MCPS teacher. I taught medical science at Thomas Edison High School of Technology. I was also the parent of a Montgomery County High School student who graduated from Thomas Einstein, or Albert Einstein High School in 2021. And I was a longtime education advocate in this system. I learned the school system very, very well by serving on my local and countywide PTA boards for over 12 years, working alongside parents and students and staff and and community partners all across the county on every issue you can name. And I bring my experience as a nurse and a lawyer and a public health professional to every question that I examine in my role. And my why is the same, to create a school system where every student and person every day feels safe, welcome, and valued.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for hosting this forum, and thank you to all of you for attending tonight. My name is Rita Montoya. I'm a candidate for Board of Education Member-at-Large. I am an attorney and a former public defender. I am a former PTA president and Executive Board Member and a passionate advocate. But most importantly, I am a current MCPS mom. I have two kids in MCPS Elementary School in 3rd and 5th grades. So I live MCPS and its policies and actions every single day. And that's why I know that if we want our kids to achieve, if we want them to do well and achieve all of their goals, we need to make sure that their schools are safe, that we have enough teachers and classrooms, that we have equitable opportunities at all of our schools, including extracurriculars like band and theater, that we need to make sure that we don't have hate, racism, and anti-blackness in our schools, that our teachers and students are trained and educated, and that we have good fiscal management. We need to make sure that we're spending our money wisely so that we have enough to cover the programs we need. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving to District 2, Brenda Diaz.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. My name is Brenda Diaz. Just a little bit about me. I was born and raised in the Bronx with Puerto Rican parents, and I attended public schools. I am the product of a gifted and talented program from PS246. And from there, I was pushed by my parents, my teachers, and the community to excel. I graduated from Georgetown University from the School of Foreign Service. From there, I became an elementary school teacher, and I've served from pre-K all the way to high school. I'm a former Gatesburg High School teacher. I'm a James Madison Memorial Fellow, which is excellence in social studies, education. And I'm here to rebuild the foundation of academic excellence within MCPS. My goal is to hold students to high academic and behavioral expectations, prioritize school safety, boost teacher morale. So many of our good teachers are leaving. I want to make sure that we're using our money wisely. And then I want to encourage and respect parental involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Zimmerman.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Natalie Zimmerman, and I am also running for Board of Education, District 2. I am a current MCPS teacher. I currently teach 3rd grade, and I absolutely love what I do. I can tell you today was an interesting day. I did have to tell a kid to stop barking, but that's part of the job and part of what I love. I'm running to make a difference. I'm running because I have seen every single day how the decisions that are made at the board level are either completely uninformed, misinformed, or disregard what's going on in the classroom every single day. I am boots on the ground doing this work. I know how it's done. I know how to do it. I'm trained to do it. And I plan to speak from the classroom and into policy. I believe that public education is the greatest act of optimism, and that is the absolute greatest investment that we can make in our students, in our community, and in our future. We need people on the board who have actually been in the classroom and who can speak from its experiences and use their connections to create a greater system for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And District 4, Ms. Shebra Evans.
Yes, it's so great to see everyone. I am Shebra Evans, and I currently serve in the role as a school board member, and I have done so for the past eight years. It's been a complete honor and pleasure to serve on the board, and I want to continue that work. My husband and I moved here 23 years ago specifically for the public school system. Montgomery County is one of the best school systems in this country, and so we wanted to make certain that our daughters had a very excellent start. I decided to run for the board eight years ago because of my commitment to equity and excellence, and I wanted to ensure that our students had access and opportunity. So fast forward now, our more black and brown students have been able to access AP and IB classes, and we're going to do more to continue to make certain that we make good on the promise to graduate our kids college, career, and community-ready. I look forward to your questions, and thank you all for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Laura Stewart.
Hello, my name is Laura Stewart, and I am running for the Board of Education for District 4. I've been a Montgomery County resident for 27 years, and my two children are recent MCPS graduates. Growing up in Prince George's County, I was taught about Takuna Olum, which teaches that it is my responsibility to make the world a more just place. And for over a decade, I've brought that work to six different nonprofits, including the local and state PTA, advocating to get the education our kids need. I decided to run for the board after I read the Office of Inspector General report released in January. I realized at that point that the Board of Education needed to take the oversight responsibility more actively. And therefore, I put my name in to bring my experience through the years of being an advocate, of being a mom, and seeing that it wasn't always easy to get kids what they need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to begin our questions. The candidates receive these first two questions in advance. The first question will allow you each 90 seconds. As a prospective member of the Board of Education, what does it mean to you to be a steward of Montgomery County Public School District? And we'll start with Ms. Harris, and then we'll go down the line.
To me, it means, first of all, celebrating what's working in the system and the hard-working employees that make the magic happen every day. And then it means being very, very intentional about fixing the things that are not working and creating continuous structures of accountability so the board has a clear sense of where we're getting a return on our investment when those budget conversations start to happen. It also means continuing the work to infuse our system top to bottom with all of the structures that we need to become a truly anti-racist system and a system that combats hate and bias in all of its forms in all of our work. It means operational excellence. It means completing the workflow analysis that we've already begun to identify redundancies in our work and roadblocks in our work that prevent us from being a good partner when it comes to contracts and procurements and MOUs and grant management. It means strategic, creating a strategic plan for programs that looks at geography as a true factor and makes sure that every great program is truly accessible to every student who has interest in it because geography matters in this system. It means creating a true plan for fine arts equity because the arts are essential and fundamental. And it means honoring our commitment to sustainability in all of our work, taking advantage of every dollar we can receive from the Inflation Reduction Act, and continuing the promise that we've made to help the county achieve its climate action goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. The job of a board and a board member is to make sure that the organization that you're overseeing, because oversight is one of the jobs, is running properly, right? In the most basic sense of the word. So when we talk about MCPS and the Board of Education, we're talking about making sure that we hire and hold accountable a superintendent, that we establish the policies that need to be in place to make things work operationally, and that we figure out the budget. So when we talk about being a good steward of MCPS, it's making sure that those are done with fidelity, that the policies are implemented properly, that we have a song, sorry, a strong, solid superintendent in place. And when it comes to the budget, it's not just about the accounting. We can look at the budget and see that the numbers we requested match up. It's about how are we spending that money? Are we spending it wisely? Are we spending it where it needs to be, or are we wasting it? Are we not making sure that our contracts are properly in place? Are we not making sure that we're following employment processes properly in place so that we don't have these legal settlements where we have to pay out our money, the taxpayer money, all of your money, right? When we do that, we don't have enough money to make sure that we have enough classrooms for lower class sizes or enough teachers to make sure that they have small group instruction time with our students, which is what shows progress and results. We don't, when we do that, we don't have enough money for things like special education services or for making sure that our classrooms are well-supplied and stocked. So when it comes to being a steward, it's not just about the mission, it's about making sure the operations are running properly.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
Yeah, so in this oversight position, one of the things that was recently brought out in a Bethesda magazine article by the student board member, actually, was that it's central office in MCPS that creates policy, and the Board of Education is actually behind. I bring this up because as a future board member, my goal is to make sure that we stop the steep decline within MCPS. We have to bring back academic rigor. We have to bring back academic excellence. When we look at the scores right now for our students in reading, writing, the proficiency levels show that we are failing our students. If I can read them to you right now, 54% of our county students are proficient in ELA in grades 3 to 8. 34% are proficient in grades 3 to 8 in math. We've turned out to be in last place, as was recently revealed in a moderately MOCO article today. 22% are proficient in Algebra I and Math. We spent $3.3 billion on our students, and these are the results. It's inexcusable and unacceptable. So as a board member, my focus, my goal, is entirely on making sure that every single dollar is dedicated to academic rigor and academic excellence, making sure that our students have everything they need to succeed in the future when they graduate. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. When I think about being a steward, to me, that means someone that will look after and care for our system and someone that will enact its mission. One of the things that we can do to care for our system is to care for our employees. I can think of, as a classroom teacher, multiple things that would cost $0 that would relieve our teachers' untenable workload. For example, I'm supposed to sign in in the office every day. That encourages a paper cost. There's a time cost to that. If we eliminate that, that we're giving our teachers back their time, we're eliminating that paper cost. I also believe that being a good steward is also a good steward to our funding and make sure that our funding is tied to our students. I want every line item in our budget to connect directly back to our classrooms and to our students. I would think about the eight-year-olds that sit in front of me every day, and while there is system benefit to educational consultants, the eight-year-olds, it doesn't matter to them that we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars on this. It matters to them that we're spending that money on their teachers, on their schools, on the supplies that they need, on a good curriculum for our students. And I want to make sure that every item is matching back to what our students need. So when I think of good stewardship, I think about caring for our employees. I think about caring for our students and connecting that through our budget items.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Sure. So as you all heard, there are so many things that are important as board members serving in this important role. The main one, I think, is making certain that our students are able to thrive after they graduate from MCPS. So that means that they have to be college, career, and community-ready. And what that looks like is making certain that when we're thinking about our return on investment, that we're ensuring that our kids are very prepared in math and literacy. As the president of, formerly, I served as the president on the board, and I made certain that when I worked with then-Supervisor Jack Smith, that we had measurements in place to be able to monitor the progress of our students. And I made sure that there was an increased data performance that we were bringing to the board table on a regular basis to make sure that our kids were being challenged at every level. And what I am very proud of is that in the budgets, that I've made certain that reading and math coaches have been available because what is really important is that our teachers, as they're in the classrooms teaching, that they really understand and know the students, and they're able to actually be able to understand how their students are struggling and help them to be able to access their learning. So this work needs to continue. And thinking about the teacher shortage, I want to make certain that we are employing our teachers at a very competitive wage. And what's really important is ensuring that our students are having an early start, and that's in pre-K. And I'm proud of the work, and we'll continue to discuss that.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
As a steward of Montgomery County Public Schools, we are responsible for a $3.3 billion operating budget and a $2 billion capital budget. It sounds like a lot of money, but we are not keeping up with the needs of our over 160,000 students. So as a member of the Board of Education, I will be laser-focused on using taxpayer dollars on funding in the most impactful way. For instance, we must be, we must do better at narrowing the opportunity gap. We need to reduce our truancy levels and improve mental health. All of these I view as emergency situations. How do we know how to aim these dollars? I believe we need to fully embrace open data and transparency and ask MPS to show their work. I do appreciate the model Shebra Evans just talked about, but as an advocate, I couldn't access that data in a data-friendly file, so I actually had to go type them in to my own cluster, and then I shared that with parents after I typed it in myself in a table. So again, let's go ahead and include our partners so we can work on all this together with you. You all are also experts, and a lot of you, and how kids learn. Let's work together.
All right. Thank you. Now, our next question. This one is a bit more involved, so you will have two minutes as we want to hear answers to both parts. As a member of the Board of Education, you will have three primary you will have three primary responsibilities: hiring a superintendent, developing policies, securing and approving a budget. We understand that there are several major programs in the operating budget, to name a few: special education, pre-K and Head Start, middle school extended-day programs, athletic programs, EML and bilingual programs, music and arts, dual enrollment at Montgomery College, and many others. Please identify your single highest priority program in the budget and why? And number two, if you must cut one program, which would you cut and why? You do not have to limit yourself to the list that I've provided. You may think of other programs that are in the MCPS budget. So we will shift down, and we will start with Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. In terms of the priority, I think that we really need to prioritize small group instruction or tutoring during the school day. Ideally, we would be able to lower class sizes, but that means we need more teachers and more classrooms, and that means we need more money. So as a practical matter, with the resources that we have now, we should use proven models, like the small group instruction or tutoring model. So DCPS recently had a grant. They did, there's a Stanford University study on that, on the findings, that show that there is growth. Did they close the achievement or opportunity gap entirely? No, but they do show measurable growth to show that that type of instruction works. We also have a model in MCPS Now called What I Need, or it's referred to as WIN, which is similar. So two to three, maybe even four times a week, students are put in different groups based on what they need. If you need enrichment, then you can get enrichment. If you need to have a little bit more progress on math, then you'll work on the progress on math. It's a great program. My own kids are participating. They love it. And again, it shows growth. We have statistics to show that it works. In terms of what I would cut, I absolutely think that it's important that we have climate goals. I grew up in California. Things like recycling, that was just a normal thing that I grew up doing. I didn't realize that other people weren't even doing it in other parts of the country. So I definitely want us to have those. I do have concerns, however, about the current electric bus contract. If you haven't seen it in the news, you can check out Montgomery Perspective. Has a lot of background info. But effectively, we do want to have electric buses. That is the way, you know, in terms of energy. But we have to make sure that our contracts are sound. We have to make sure that they contain all of the provisions that we need. We need to make sure that we are properly vetting our vendors, that we are following procurement processes. In this particular contract, two of the MCPS employees involved ended up with criminal indictment and criminal charges. There's a current lawsuit pending for someone challenging the contract award by another vendor. So we need to make sure that those are sound.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
Thank you for that question. So of all the programs, I mean, we have so many programs with an MCPS that are, I think, are fantastic. We've got our French immersion program, our Spanish immersion, or just basically our language immersion programs. And when I look at all of our programs and what it is that I would prioritize, I think we need to focus on our special education programs. Many of our teachers are saying that they don't have the resources that they need. Recently, Dr. Taylor held a listening session at Rockville High School, and we had a teacher come up, saying that they didn't even have their workbook printed out for them that they could properly teach our students. So our teachers need, they have to have the resources to just function in the classroom. So I would look at special ed, making sure that our special ed programs are properly funded, that we have the teachers that were recruiting them, that we have the paraeducators in the classroom. When I was in the classroom, you know, I had a paraeducator with me often, and that was fantastic. You know, when I was teaching and working in small groups, she was able to do the same. And the same for my, for the ESOL program. So I understand what it's like to be in the classroom, to have the resources and then not to have them when the copiers break down, right? So we need to prioritize our special education, all the different ways in which we can support education, special education programs. Now, what would I cut? In leasing, in listening to the teachers, Dr. Taylor held a listening session where one of the teachers outright said, "We need to cut the SEL program at the high school level." What is SEL? It's our social-emotional-learning programs. This is time taken away from our classes to talk about controversial social issues or political issues or just things that are happening in, in our communities. Teachers don't want it. Students don't want it. It's a waste of their time. It's taking up their prep time. I would cut that. And then I would also look at our EV bus program. Like, the contract is criminal, is corrupt, and needs to be stopped.
Thank you. Ms. Immerman.
Thank you. I want to prioritize our curriculums and our interventions and enrichments that we're providing. Currently, I get 25 minutes per day with my students, this designated time, where I am supposed to both fill in the gaps but also enrich the students that are ready for more with just 25 minutes per day for both reading and math. I only get 25 minutes a day, and it's simply not enough time, not for what our students need, especially when they are begging for more. Also, our special educators and our English language development teachers are not given the books for our new ELA curriculum. I don't know how they're supposed to instruct when they're not given the resources that they need. We also have heard, discussed at the Board level, that there are these multilingual math books available for kids to take home and use with their families. I've asked for these books. I've asked to be able to bring them home, like, give to my students to bring home, and I'm told that there's no money in the budget for them. And trying to go about printing them out myself is not possible with the limited resources that I have at my elementary school. When I look at the other interventions that our teachers want to implement, that we simply need more time. We need more teachers that can come into the classroom and provide these interventions as well as enrich our students that are ready for it. When I think about programs to cut, I want to bring back to our educational consultants. As an educator in MCPS, the first three years, you are offered the opportunity to have a consulting teacher. It's a great opportunity. I love my consulting teacher. I learned a lot from her. But I'm only afforded three years. When I look at the top, when I look at how our educational consultants, the same firms have been in there for 10 years, I find it insulting that administrators are offered 10 years of this same consulting firm when I am only offered three as an educator. It simply doesn't equate to me. That I believe that we need to look and see, what have we learned? And are we planning to continue? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Sure. You would hear me say that education is the great equalizer, and so I didn't finish in my other statement, pre-K. I am a firm believer that our students having access to education early will make them successful in life. And so pre-K expansion is very high on my list. Since I've been on the Board, we have added 1,000 additional seats for pre-K, and that has made a difference. So that brings us to about, close to 4,500, almost 5,000 students have the ability to go to pre-K. And what that does, it allows their parents to be able to work. What we are hearing is that our parents are not able to have a job where they can better serve their families. Pre-K has been half-day, so it's been a huge priority of mine to make certain that pre-K is full-day. But I think in terms of what to cut, so what the Board has prioritized is program evaluation. We won't just cut a program because we have decided for ourselves that it's not working. Our Office of Shared Accountability will make certain that they are evaluating the programs. On the list, we have 12 programs. To date, we have cut a program, and it was the leader in me. But we had an effective evaluation done before deciding that, and what it showed us, that based on the data, that we were not seeing a return on investment for the money that we were spending. And so we no longer wanted to do that. We wanted to make certain that we continue to be good stewards of the money that is given us to make certain that whatever programs that we put in place, that it is serving and benefiting our students.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
A lot of these parties are amazing, but the one I would pick is community schools. Other systems, like the Oakland Unified School District, has shown great success with community schools. And the Blueprint for Maryland's Future helps us fund community schools, but we need to make sure that we do it with fidelity. So I would like for the Board of Education to actually write a community, community schools policy so that we are implementing them across the county, again, following the blueprint, but also making sure that we are doing all the steps to do it in the best way possible. We can look at other districts and follow their lead. We need to streamline our MOU process so we can have more community partners, be involved in community schools, and get those, the tutoring and mental health services kids need. On the capital side, HVAC. So I'll move on to what program that we would cut. I would look not at necessarily a specific program right now because I would need that data, but I-
... and work smarter, not harder, by analyzing uptake, eliminating what's not being utilized, and better structure.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to move on to community questions. These questions have been submitted in advance, vetted, and prioritized by our committee, and we've made every effort to eliminate redundancy in accurate information and biased questions. We will not take any questions from the floor, but we'll focus on the ones that were already submitted. So question number one. Describe how your experience makes you the best candidate for the position on the Board of Education. Why should voters of Montgomery County elect you to the school board instead of your component? And we'll start with Ms. Diaz.
I love this question. Why me?
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Diaz. I'm sorry. You all have 90 seconds for each.
All right. I didn't start yet. All right. So this question, why me? You know, I've been in education now for over 20 years, and during my time, the reason why I became a teacher was because of my experience being a student. I was so lucky to have Mrs. Losack as my gifted and talented teacher when I was in fifth and sixth grade. And then, and then I had the opportunity to participate in something called Prep for Prep, where they identified to get the students and helped put us in elite private schools in New York City. So I went from the public school environment to this elite environment where I was clueless, but they guided us and they helped us. In that experience, I learned that it's not just me and my own effort, but my parents who guide me. It's my teachers who guide me. It's my community who guides me. And then I went on and I became a parent. And I wanted to do the same for my children. I became a preschool teacher because my children were in preschool. I became an elementary school sub because they were in the elementary schools. And while I was summing, I was getting my grad school degree at George, at George Washington University. So from there, I became, I was an elementary school teacher, got my degree to teach at, so that I could teach at Gatesburg High School. So my own career has mirrored my, mirrored my children's progress. Why me? Because I care and I'm dedicated to all students in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Ms. Immerman.
Thank you. If you are looking for someone that is certified in teaching special education, that knows what our special education students need, I have that certification. I have a master's. If you are looking for someone that is certified to teach English language development, are emerging multilingual learners, I'm certified to teach them. I know what they need. If we're looking for someone that's certified in general education, that's certified to teach English language arts up to the high school level, I'm certified to teach this. I know what our students and our educators need. This is what I live and do every day in a public school in Montgomery County. Over 25% of my students last year were identified as gifted and talented, and using the MCPS metrics of putting students on a college track, over 70% of my students last year were identified as being on a college track. I know what our students need. I do this every single day. So if we're looking for someone that will be able to take apart our data, the realistic data that we look at, and be able to pinpoint where it's going wrong and where educators need support, that's me. That's what I do in my classroom every single day. I want to help all of our students in MCPS, all of our educators in MCPS, be able to do the same. I want to see success for all of our students. I know I can do it. I'm running because I want to make a difference for our students. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Sure. This is interesting. So my degree is in econ and finance. And so without knowing that this would be my final destination, our kids actually helped me to get into this role. I started out volunteering as a PTA leader at the local level, and I did it just because of what I was seeing happening in our elementary school. I eventually went on to be a leader at the county level with the Montgomery County Council of PTAs. And because I knew at that moment that my voice was needed, I ran for school board. And so that's eight years ago. I've served two terms. And in my role, I've tried to make certain that I've been effective, right? So not only do I walk the walk, I talk the talk as well. I've served as a president twice. I've served as a vice president twice. I was the president at the height of the pandemic, so I know how to work through change. I know how to work through a crisis. I also serve at the state level. I have just been recently sworn in as the president-elect for the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. So that means I will be serving in a role overseeing what's happening in the 24 school districts in the state of Maryland. This is a job that I love. I did not mention, I have two daughters. They've graduated from this public school system, and they've done great things. We live in the Wheaton, Aspen Hill area, and I live in the part of the county where it is the most economically disadvantaged. And so I do this work because of how I was raised. When you see things that are not working, what you do is you step in and you take part and you create solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
This is a great question. I have been a volunteer. I say over 10 years, but it's really been closer to 15. I actually started on the Board at the preschool that my kids went to, and then I went and became PTA president at our school when I realized that we lost our soccer field because of portables being put out in the field, and there was no plan at that point to alleviate the building. And then I went on and I discovered MCC PTA. Actually, Frances Frost was president at the time when I got involved. And I realized that there were so many disparities around the county. So I felt the need to step up and try to help. Then I went ahead and became advocacy vice president for the countywide PTA and worked with the whole county and talked to parents all over, including, you know, Poolsville with some of their environmental health issues, where they were building their building and kids got sick because of tar being put on the roof. Those are the kind of things that made me jump into action, actually even got legislation passed in Annapolis to protect kids from lead and water because Einstein High School had a spike in lead. This is what I do. If I see there is a problem, I jump in and help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
It has truly become my, my passion to serve this school system over the past three and a half years. When I was elected in 2020, I felt like I was bringing a lot of experience to the work. As a teacher, as a parent, as a longtime education advocate, I had a deep, wide knowledge of the system. And I did bring a lot of knowledge to the system, but I've also had a kind of a ringside seat to some pretty difficult times in the system over the past three years. And what has truly helped me as I have chaired the Fiscal Management Committee since the first day I was sworn in and use that committee to really focus on multiple areas of the work of the school system because I believe we can look at every aspect of the work through the lens of operational excellence. So looking at multiple specific areas of the work of the system through a lens of operational excellence, but I always also use my, my prior experience as a nurse and as a lawyer and as a public health person to analyze everything that comes before me. That makes me, by nature, a very pragmatic problem solver who begins every conversation, look at every issue with the idea of how do we get this done? Not what about this is going to be hard? And I spend much time engaging with people in the community, students and teachers and family members and our community partners because I don't know what I don't know, and the process of learning is non-stop, but the wisdom of our customers is my north star.
Thank you.[1739.18] Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. You should vote for me because I have the biggest stake in the game. I have an eight-year-old and a 10-year-old and I live MCPS every single day, whether I want to or not. That's why I'm here. Because I know that my kid's future depends on MCPS getting it right. So do your kids. And if you don't have kids, all the kids in this county, they're going to be taken care of all of us one day. They're going to be making these policies. They're going to be the scientists and the doctors. And we're not going to have well-informed leaders if they can't read, write, or do math. You should vote for me because I haven't been on the board chairing the fiscal management committee for the last four years. Because if I had been, we wouldn't be spending our money in this way. We wouldn't be wasting it on settlements. We would make sure that our procurement policies are being followed. And I would have asked for an audit. Because this is taxpayer money that is investing into our children. And if we don't invest now, we are going to regret it in 15 to 20 years because we are not going to have well-informed leaders running this county, this state, or this country. Because Montgomery County leads, but we will not be able to because our children will not be ready. That's why you should vote for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Hopefully everyone is paying attention and making some mental notes, if not physical notes, as they think about who they're voting for, for Board of Education. We've heard some really important issues that go through the school system, and so these are very important roles. Our next question deals with equity in our school system. Any form of racism, discrimination, hatred, and acts of violence have no place in Montgomery County schools. What resources or policy changes do you believe is needed to ensure these acts do not happen in our schools? We'll give you 90 seconds for each response and we'll start with Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. When I think about what our students need, and I want to bring that back to keeping our students safe and making sure that they're safe emotionally. When our students enter the school building, they, they need to know that there are adults there that care about them, adults there that they can connect to. I can tell you that MCPS right now does not meet our nationally recommended ratios for school counselors, school psychologists, or social workers. So if our students' needs aren't being met at a basic level, then it's really difficult for them to be able to learn. If they, if we aren't able to meet their basic Maslow's needs, then they're not ready for Bloom's taxonomy. You might have heard similar phrases like that in education before. Similarly, I think about our students who rely on meals from school. And I would be advocating at the state level to make sure that our students can all have access to free breakfast and free lunch if they choose to partake in that. When I think about other incidents and other policies that we need to enact, our students are, when we're thinking about hate bias, one of the things that is not happening is effective training for our staff. The current, the current trainings that were being offered as someone who's participated then, most of the time they are click-through. This past fall, or I'm sorry, this past spring, I was offered a training that was about hate bias, but it was only a video. And at the end, I had to click through a few slides and say that I completed it. It's not enough. We need to do better.
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Yes. Could you please repeat the question?
I will. Any form of racism, discrimination, hatred, and acts of violence have no place in Montgomery County schools. What resources or policy changes do you believe is needed to ensure these acts do not happen in our schools?
Thank you. So currently we have a policy, Policy ACA, nondiscrimination, cultural proficiency, cultural proficiency and equity. And so what we can do is we can tighten up that policy and be more explicit and more clear about the things that we will not tolerate in the school system. Currently, our students have a student rights and responsibility. We can take a look at that and make certain that we really call out and make it clear. We offer training for our staff, but what we have heard, the training could be a little bit more intentional about really getting to the root causes of what we're seeing. And I think what's most important is do what we're doing here today. Have conversations out in the community with our faith-based organizations because it's imperative and it's important that we are informing our community, that we are consulting our community on what we're doing and getting their feedback, as well as involving the community and being collaborative. We have a very robust community engagement policy that Ms. Frost worked on, and I appreciate that. But we really, really have to do more at having the conversation with our parents and with our families about what kindness looks like, being civil, and that really happens at home. And so we can continue to do work out in our community to share and talk about what's happening in our schools and what should not be happening. It will make a huge difference.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
The first thing we need to determine is what is actually happening in our schools. And this is why I'm advocating for a full safety and climate assessment in every school. And we need to do that in an intentional way. So we're doing small group discussions as well. So kids and families will feel comfortable about sharing their experiences. The problem is the reporting mechanisms are not strong enough. And a lot of our families don't think, even know where to go to report. And it's not accessible, so we need to work on that. So define the problem and then work with our partners. There are so many good partners that I've met throughout this county on the campaign trail. And I have been collecting their cards because I want to follow back up to make sure that we are utilizing them to the best, the best way we can. They know what's happening in the community. We need more mediation in our schools and we can work on that MOU process. I have heard that it is long and laborious. I've talked to someone. This was taking them 15 months to be able to get therapy dogs in schools. And I think that's something that we can look at. Also, let's make sure we have proper placement of some of our children that are in schools. Some of them are not getting the intense resources they need. And so we can work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
I think it's essential to, if we're going to create a, a school system where everybody feels safe and welcome and valued, we need to make sure that we are consistently partnering with the people who walk the halls and walls of our school every day to find out from them what's working, what's not, and what their ideas are for improvement. I think system-wide, we, we really need to embrace trauma-informed practices because whoever you are in our school system, whatever your role or responsibility, it's important that you, that you are well if you're going to do well. Whether that's learning in a classroom or teaching in a group of schools or driving a bus or, you know, greeting visitors and families in the main office. So we need, we need to make sure that we have the systems in place to, to support individuals in their, in their physical, mental, and emotional wellness with resources that we are providing through our social workers, our school psychologists, our counselors, special programs, but also with our many partners who are coming into our schools and working on creating a climate that is healthy for everyone in the building and giving individuals the resources that they need to become more resilient. We need to follow up very closely as our anti-racist action plan work group is coming to the conclusion of its work and recommendations. The same with our anti-hate bias work group as they are coming forward with their recommendations and so much more.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
Our kids need in-school explicit education and correction. Racism, anti-blackness, hate, it is absolutely a problem, even at the youngest levels of school. Elementary schools are not just walking around with rainbows and butterflies. There is racism at those levels as well and it needs to be addressed. I have young kids. You can't beat around the bush. You can't dance around about things. You need to be very clear about what is acceptable, what is not, why it is not, what is the impact, and what is the consequence. We also need to make sure that in order to do that, that means our administrators, our teachers, our staff, they also need to be trained. And as Ms. Zimmerman mentioned, a click-through online training is not going to cut it. So, you know, in that vein, we also need to hire more black teachers. If you look at the statistics on our educators, if you look at some of our schools, there are barely any. If you look at who are Maryland or Montgomery County Educators of the Year are every single year, year after year, you will notice a pattern. And it's not that there's black teachers in that, in that pattern. So I think if we want our, our schools and we want, you know, people say windows and mirrors, the school needs to reflect our students. Is it reflecting our black students? I would argue no. And I think we also see that then when we look at our proficiency scores and the ways that our students are not getting the opportunities that they need. That's why we see our science scores for our black students in the teens. Less than 20% are proficient. We see similar numbers in math. If we want our black students to achieve, we need to make sure that they feel safe in their schools from racism and that they see themselves in the staff that's around them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
So as part of this campaign, I had the opportunity to meet with the organization known as Young People for Progress. And in this meeting, we talked about academic rigor. We talked about school resource officers. We talked about teachers within our school system. And where we did meet in a very big way was about academic rigor. What does academic rigor have to do with racism, hatred, and acts of violence? Simply put, they told me many of our students are bored. They're not given challenging material. And so as a result, they look for ways to just entertain themselves within the classroom. This is what's happening in our school system. They're not getting grade-level appropriate assignments. And so that's contributing to a lot of the problems that we're seeing in our, in our classes today, in our schools today. I know because when I was in the classroom at Gatesburg High School, I had to keep my students absolutely focused on the academic challenges within my class. And that's what I focused on. So I would dedicate our resources to making sure that our students understand in every lesson, at every moment that they are in the schools, that agency, self-responsibility, self-accountability, that they are going to be held to a standard, high behavioral and academic standards. This is what I did when I was in the classroom. My students excelled because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're moving on to our next question, which focuses on student mental health. Youth mental health is an increasing concern. And there are disparities in equitable access to appropriate resources for children of color and families in lower-resourced communities. As a board member, how do you suggest we address these issues? And we'll start with Ms. Evans. 60 seconds for each response.
Okay. Thank you. So COVID exacerbated much of what we saw, particularly in the area of mental health. And what we were able to do was make certain that we got more social workers. We, I believe we were able to increase it by additional 42. That was a challenge for us prior to the pandemic. We were able to get, use our ESAR funds. We created student well-being teams so that our, the, the leaders in the buildings were able to determine which students weren't being engaged and being able to provide supports to their families. MCP has actually lashed this past April at the National School Board Association meeting that was held in New Orleans. They won the highest award because of the work that we were doing around mental health. Over 4,200 students last year were able to access mental health supports because of what we were seeing. And so we were very proud that more students were feeling the need to be able to come forward to get the support they needed.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
So during COVID, I sat on a community partners call. Actually, I still do it monthly. It was actually every week. And where it was health, health initiatives, and specifically, a lot of black organizations came to that call and they are looking to partner with schools. So I would try to use that resource and make sure that they're getting access into schools so they can help kids. Kimberly Fogg runs one of these programs and she's really excited to get in more schools. I would increase telehealth. I testified for that in Annapolis. We can have a space in our school where kids can access therapy through telehealth. So their parents won't have to come in and sign them out and then sign them back in. We could work with our community partners. It's easier to get services if they don't have to physically go to the school or the kid doesn't have to physically go to the office.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
We need to focus on first, fully utilizing the resources that we already have. Our community schools, our school-based wellness centers, our wellness spaces in our high schools. Working alongside our, our social workers and our school health staff that are from our partners with DHHS, our Positive Youth Development Team and Street Outreach Network partners who are, you know, that's their bread and butter, is working with young people, helping them to identify and, and reach, identify their own strengths and challenges when it comes to navigating the world and reaching out to get supports that they need and to also recognize the signs that others around them might need resources and provide those resources to them. I think, you know, looking at more robustly rolling out mental health first aid training to our MCP staff, Narcan administration training to our staff.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya.
We need more providers, whether it's in-school with school psychologists, evaluators, school counselors, social workers, or outside. Even if you have insurance, the waitlists are long, especially for children. Not everyone provides therapy for children. It's hard to get in-person therapy for children, especially while it was wonderful that providers were able to provide online services during COVID. Some seem to only now provide online services, which especially for children, I can say as a mother, is not necessarily the best way for them to receive these services. I think it's really wonderful that we do provide services in our schools, but with the lack, the, the ratio of provider to student, I really question the quality that we're providing. Therapy is not a, a one-stop deal. You don't go to therapy one time and everything's fine. We need consistent support services for our students and also for our families. If we're sending our students back to families who need support services in themselves, who may need therapy or family therapy, or perhaps the, the parents could use some therapy, then we're not really going to make much progress for our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz.
So there recently, a book was published called The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Hay. In this book, he explains the reasons why we've seen a rise in mental health problems in our children. It is linked to the rise of the use of smartphones by our children. They are addicted to these phones. And unfortunately, it has led to social alienation and increase in mental illness, increase in depression. Our children are not going outside to play. I live in a neighborhood full of children. I don't see them outside after school playing. Recession during the school day has been cut maybe to half an hour if they're lucky. We need to increase outdoor recess. We need to take away the phones during the school day. Have a community-wide conversation about that. We need to prioritize outdoor play as just a part of what we do. Play is an essential part of childhood. So increase arts programs, sports programs, and the such. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I want to elevate again that we are not meeting our nationally recommended ratios when it comes to our school counselors, our school psychologists, and our social workers. That our students need more and our national, nationally, we're being told that our students need more. We need to be providing that and allocating for that in our budget. I would also like to see an increase in our peer-to-peer support groups. Not that our peers are providing therapy to students, but something to capitalize on the fact that our students are already seeking out these peer relationships and if this is what they're seeking out, that we can use that to help us. Students are going to be able to connect with each other. They're also going to be able to connect with an adult in the room. A great example of this is the Minority Scholars Program where kids are able to build those connections. I'd also like to see the, an increase in the reach of our wellness trainers through community schools. There are many elementary schools, three middle schools, and only one high school. So I'd like to see us do greater outreach there through community schools and wellness trainers. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question. I think you have 60 seconds on this last one. Is it 60? There are many challenges to diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in schools across the country. How would you defend diversity and inclusion in the MCPS curriculum? And we'll start with Ms. Stewart.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear one of the words in the last sentence. Use the set.
I can read it again.
Thank you.
There are many challenges to diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts in schools across the country. How would you defend diversity and inclusion in the MCPS curriculum?
This is extremely important. I am for inclusive curriculum. And that means that we are representing all of our children and families in our curriculum. It is important that kids see themselves in what they are being taught every day. We need to review our history lessons and make sure that we are actually delivering accurate history and also history that is relevant to the full diversity in our schools. Right now, diversity, equity, inclusion is under attack. I think it's important in Montgomery County that we defend, that we defend this in our schools. And so I promise that I will. And so I promise that I will stand up for inclusivity, especially having a diverse workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I mean, diversity is actually who we are in Montgomery County. It's the most diverse county in the country, and inclusion is the work. How are we actually including authentically in all aspects of the work that the system does? All of our very diverse identities. I'm firmly convinced that the inclusive diverse workforce that this county needs is in our classrooms right now. And how do we ensure that they are authentically seeing themselves represented in the curriculum they're taught and the books they read? You can joke about it, but I do believe in windows and mirrors in the classroom. They need to see themselves reflected, but it also needs to be an opportunity for them to learn about the experiences of others that aren't like them. And I think in that work, we have to, as we create those kinds of classrooms, a diverse workforce is absolutely key. We can't manufacture a workforce in a national teacher shortage, but we can encourage our current students to view that as a career that they aspire to.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya?
Thank you. Actually, like Ms. Harris, I also agree that we need our students to authentically see themselves in the classroom. I'm Native American and Mexican, as are my children. So you can imagine, when today on Indigenous Peoples' Day, I was shocked that my children even have to go to school, that I didn't see any message coming from M C P S or the Board of Education. I haven't had a chance to talk to both of my children because I came straight here, but one of them said, "No, Mom, no one mentioned anything." And this is something I specifically brought up to a Board of Education member two years ago. Because on that Indigenous Peoples' Day in that year, my children's school had an open house that I had to go to. So we didn't go to Baltimore to attend a pow-wow and other festivities with other tribal members. So I absolutely value that. I think it's absolutely important. I don't like the way we see this as some separate type of history. We only talk about it during certain times or on certain days, or we have certain classes. It's just history. It is our history. We are part of that history, and we should be included every single day. So you can absolutely guarantee that I will be defending our right to be included in these stories.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz?
I've had the opportunity to create curriculum at the elementary school level and at the high school level. So when I was an elementary school Spanish teacher, I created curriculum for kindergarten all the way up to sixth grade. And that curriculum was obviously unbelievably diverse. So we did, we covered Puerto Rican cultures and Latin America all throughout. And then when I was at the high school level, I was able to participate in creating the U.S. history curriculum, making sure that it was diverse, making sure that it was inclusive. I also taught Latin American history as an elective at Gatesburg High School. That was, that was the class, those lessons, I created those. And they covered the first feminist in the new world, Sor Juana Inés de la Cruz. They covered African, the African diaspora in Latin America. So diversity, inclusion, that is a priority for me as a teacher. It always has been. It's always appeared in my lessons. Now, I want to make sure that our students continue to have you, to have that, and of course, I value that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman?
Thank you. I also want to echo that I do not support opting out of inclusive curriculum. We are teaching students at public schools where we welcome all children, and we teach and prepare them for a public life where they will interact with diverse people. We need D E I because it's not an achievement gap. It's an opportunity gap, and it's a belief gap. Our students can learn and they can achieve. I believe that we need high-quality implicit bias training. Our Black and Brown students are less likely to be recommended for challenging courses than their white and Asian peers, not because of lack of ability, but because of implicit bias. These checkbox trainings that we are asked to do over and over again are not cutting it. They're not making any difference. And I can tell you that as someone that's participated in them, we need to do better for our educators so we can do better for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
M C P S should be the best at getting better. So we can always do more to improve what we're doing around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am proud that I raised my hand back in February of 2018 to ensure that our curriculum was diverse. We spent a lot of time making certain that our community could come and really look at the curriculum that before we implemented it. And we had a lot of adults and children come before us at the board table to say that they saw themselves reflected in the curriculum. What can we do around social studies? We can always improve and make certain that our students, particularly around African-American history, that they do have that, they know that. I am a big proponent of ensuring that our teacher workforce, or just our workforce period, is diverse and is reflected of our student population. It currently is not. And so we've been working really closely with our H R to be very intentional about going out and engaging our historically Black colleges and universities. I graduated from one, Tennessee State University, and just working with all of our partners to ensure that we have a diverse workforce.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to our third segment, which is a little bit different format. This is going to be more of a roundtable discussion among our candidates. If you've ever watched the Board of Education meeting, you know that they have conversations amongst themselves about the different issues. So it'll follow that kind of format. We'll talk about four different, we'll have this conversation in four different segments, and each segment will not exceed six minutes. And each individual will be limited to speak for thirty seconds at a time. And you may speak twice in each segment. All right? Again, we'll have our timekeepers who will be, who will keep tracking time to allow us to manage the time for this segment. They will not use the green placards to signal the start, but however, they will have the yellow and the red. You guys got all of those rules? Okay. And you do not have to go in order. Just jump in as you see fit. So here's your question, or your topic. As elected official, as elected officials with responsibility for Montgomery County Public Schools, your decisions will impact over one hundred and sixty thousand students and their families, twenty and twenty-five thousand employees and their families. And as we've heard, you will be managing a three-point-three billion operating budget made of taxpayer dollars. For this roundtable, we'll hear from you about accountability. We want you each to discuss what it means to be accountable and what does that look like? So our first segment will talk about students. You won't teach the students. You will not drive them to school each morning, but you will impact them. So discuss how you will demonstrate your accountability to students in M C P S. And anyone may start.
I want to speak to what are called our evidence of learning measures and how we hold students accountable there. There are currently three metrics that we use to hold our students accountable. One of those is our state tests. One of those is our internal measures, and one of those is our classroom grades. I want to see our students having not any escalated or elevated grades. I want to make sure that their classroom grades reflect the classroom work that's going on. Things like the fifty percent rule, that's now been eliminated. It needs to be eliminated across our schools. We need to hold our students and educators accountable there.
I'd like to make room for more student voices. I know that we have very active student members in high school, middle school. At my son's school, they have the Student Government Association. We have various programs. But sometimes we only hear from certain schools, or we only hear from certain students, or students whose parents maybe can get them to various things. So we do need to come up with another way, even for our elementary students. They have great ideas. They see things, and they have a lot to say, especially our fourth and fifth graders who are getting ready to go to middle school. So I really would like to see us bring them into the fold.
I'll jump in. I would love to have town halls just for students throughout the county from the Board of Education. I think it's so important to have these dialogues and to hear directly from our students because I, I hear from them things that I didn't know what was happening in our schools. And so they're the, on the front line, right? They're the ones receiving the education. They're the ones that's experiencing what it is like in the building.
It would be important to know what's happening in the classroom to ensure that the professional development that we're providing to our teachers is actually working really well. And if the coaching that they're receiving is being translated to if our students are learning, and if they are, how do we know that? And if they're not, what are we going to do about that? So it would be important to have the administration come back to share the results so that we can make a determination what we need to do going forward in our budget in particular. Because if it's not, if we're not seeing return on investment, then we need to look at not continuing that program or seeing how we can further help the people in the classroom.
Yeah, so one of the best ways to keep our students accountable, honestly, is just to get rid of grade inflation. So, I mean, the fifty percent rule, which was eliminated, that's true, that was mentioned. But then also the rounding up of quarterly grades. So right now, if you get an A in the first quarter and then you get an F in the second quarter, you end up with a B. This is not holding our students accountable. So we've got to change that. You know, when I was in the classroom, students gamed the system. They'd show up for the first quarter, then not show up for the second quarter. They'd do their assignments for the first quarter and not do it in the second. That's not encouraging learning. That's how I'm going to hold them accountable. Change that policy.
It would be important that we also are alerting our parents very early as to how well their students are doing. And we want them to be able to help their students access the learning at home. And it would be incumbent upon the teachers in the classroom to be able to share early and often with our parents what is happening with their students so that they can continue to make sure that they stay on track with their learning.
I want to agree with Ms. Evans on that, that this early warning indicator system that a lot of our families are asking for. As a classroom teacher, I can tell you, I can picture in my head where I would click to find it. And I open a browser, and I click in the left, and then down three, I click on there, and those early warning indicators appear. If our families are asking for those, we need to be releasing them to our families. We need to be communicating them with our families. It shows us things like which standards our students aren't doing well on and where we see attendance concerns. And if parents aren't aware that their students are showing up to class tardy every day, this is a way to help communicate that to them.
Ms. Harris, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I mean, I firmly believe that education is a business, and students are customers, and you can't have a successful business if you ignore your customers. And students have got to be front and center in every priority-setting, policymaking, and problem-solving conversation. And I have one hundred and eighty students in my countywide internship from elementary, middle, and high schools all across the county, and we regularly meet and talk about the issues that are coming to the board table so that the way I think about those issues and the questions I ask are infused by the unique wisdom that the students bring.
And I just want to make a note that when I talk about making sure we're capturing all the voices, yes, it's so that I can hear their thoughts and their suggestions and their experiences, but it's also so that they have an opportunity to tell me, "Ms. Montoya, when you made that decision, this is what happened." This was the ripple effect, because that's what happens so often in many industries, right? There becomes a disconnect between those who are living it and those who are making the decisions. And that's why it's so important to have current parents, because I'm doing both.
We also need to make sure that each of our children's having adult relationships in the school, a relationship with an adult, a trusted adult that they can go to. And that's another way that we can have accountability to our students, that they always have someone they can go to.
I like that we're talking about student accountability in terms of conversations, but I think also sometimes we just need to tell our students what's right and what's wrong. We need to be very clear and very explicit about what our behavioral expectations are. Today, we had a student, it was reported that he struck a teacher with his laptop. This is unacceptable and excusable behavior. We need to make these things clear way before those incidents happen, right? So those conversations, okay, let's talk. But then sometimes, I need to tell you what's acceptable and what's not.
Ms. Harris? You have your last word.
I, I do think that it's very important, if we are accountable to students, everybody's making excellent points. But the authentic engagement of students in every conversation around schools, I don't think happens enough because the schools are a microcosm of the county. Any issue that a grown-up sees that might be happening in a school, the students see it also. But they come to the problem with unique view of their peers and have that focus on how do we solve this issue?
All right, as our board meeting continues, we're going to move on to families. Students in Montgomery County represent a very diverse population in race, culture, native language, heritage, religion, income, and many other ways. How will you demonstrate accountability to this diverse population and be accountable to the parents of the students? Again, anyone may start.
I see parents and families every day, in the car line, at the P T A, at various events throughout the county. And, you know, I'm a very approachable person. People have no problem coming up to me to talk about certain issues or things that are going on. They don't have to know me or have met me before. And I make sure that I make myself approachable. That would be the job. And when I was in the P T A, that was also the job. So I think making sure that we're accessible and that we're open to criticism, right? We can't do better if we don't hear from you how we need to do better, and I really take that to heart.
I think one of, I like the idea, and definitely, we need to be communicating with families, but this needs to happen on a regular basis, right? So I recently had an opportunity to meet with members of the Ethiopian community. Parents invited me. This is lieutenant organization that not only brought in the principal of their schools, but then they also invited a candidate for the Board of Education, myself, to come and talk to them. I've listened. I spent the majority of my time listening to their concerns. They wanted homework back in school. They wanted discipline back in school. This is what they wanted. They wanted to be heard, and that's my job, to listen.
I don't want to make the assumption that I know how parents want to be reached. So I want to be able to ask parents, how best do they receive information? And I think it would be important to let parents know and communicate with them some of the things that we expect. I'll take chronic absenteeism, for example. You know, at the elementary level, I'm not certain that parents really understand and know what it means to be chronically absent. Our students cannot get themselves to school in elementary. They're dependent upon their parents. So we need them to understand, our kids need to be in school in order to learn, and we need your help to do that.
I'd like to piggyback on the communication aspect. I've been hearing from parents throughout the county that do, they do not find our website friendly at all. It is hard to find information sometimes. We have something new called the school profiles, and yet many parents don't even know that this exists. So let's work on that website as part of the communication with families and also work on communicating in different ways. So I'll stop there.
And we also want parents to know that their first line of communication should be with their teacher and at their school. So a lot of important information should be on their school's website. District information, of course, is at the, at the district level. And we should make certain that whatever we want to communicate with our parents is clear. But we want our parents to know that they should be making their first stop at their local school.
I want to speak to schools and communicating with educators. I have to say that sometimes I feel like a parent-teacher conference happening in mid-November, it's not early enough when we're recognizing our concerns, that we need to be bringing up these concerns more frequently. We need to be having those conversations, opening that dialogue with our families. I think we need to make it a greater policy that if data metrics are meeting X point for a student, that we need to bring that up by early to mid-October so our families can be aware and so we can bring these concerns so no one's surprised at a parent-teacher conference.
So what's happened in M C P S recently with parents, and I shouldn't even say recently, because this started when my middle girl was at elementary school. We've essentially pushed parents out of the classroom. We've pushed parents out of the school buildings. It's become incredibly difficult to volunteer in classes now. And at the high school level, we found, back to school night, you don't even get to visit your child's classroom anymore. What's that about? We should be able to visit each and every single one of our child's classes. This should, this should be our number-one policy. It's that, this is how we hold ourselves accountable as a system to our parents.
I think it's really important when we look at, we have two hundred and eleven schools, and each school is very different and unique from, as compared to every other school. And it's also different from itself every year. It's the nature of the work. And I think the board, I really like the idea of the board being out in community more and being, having very authentic conversations with our school communities about how can we make you feel welcome? And how can we make you feel very, very, very confident in, in coming to us with any issue that you may experience in your school?
When I think about the question that you asked, how do we hold ourselves as board members, as policymakers, accountable to families? That means how do I make sure, how do we check ourselves, right? How do we allow families to say, "Hey, this is not working?" And so, while I think a lot of these things are great with, you know, websites and being able to visit classrooms, it's about, are we making space for families to criticize the work that we are doing? And I would argue- the work that we are doing? And I would argue that sometimes currently we are not, and we need to do better, and I plan to do that.
I also think we need to close the loop on some of the communication with families. I hear too often that they hit a black wall, basically. So they send emails out, they never hear back. So we need to work on a system to make sure parents are always hearing back. And I don't know the absolute answer to that, but I want to explore how we can make sure that they're getting responses back. One thing is an 800 number, which is open today in English and Spanish. And if a parent calls that number, they're supposed to get a call back within 72 hours.
Ms. Harris or Ms. Zimmerman?
Yeah, I think that we really do, you know, one of the things that the board does, governance oversight accountability, setting very clear expectation through our schools' team with our school administrators about the expectation that there be multiple opportunities for parents to engage with their students, teachers, in formal and informal ways as the year progresses, as Ms. Zimmerman mentioned earlier than we typically do, to make sure if a student is struggling, those things are picked up very quickly.
I want to talk about something that my previous school district did very well, and they really
Did you go twice?
No, no, sorry.
I went once.
Sorry.
Come on, Miss Evans.
That's okay. We had a really wonderful National African-American Parent Involvement Day, and the way that we were able to bring so many families in on that day was really wonderful. And I noticed that both schools that I've taught at recently in MCPS don't honor that in the same way. I also noticed that when we have an open house, we try to welcome families in, it's often difficult for them to come. I want to see us open that up more.
Thank you. The next segment is around staff. The Board of Education has one employee, the superintendent. That superintendent has more than 20,000 employees that carry out the policies of the board to educate and protect students. They work within the constraints of the budget that the board adopts. As a board member, how do you demonstrate accountability to the staff of MCPS? Consider your administrators, educators, mental health staff, security, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and other staff at all levels of the district.
When I taught at Gethysburg High School, one of the major frustrations was that we didn't have support from administration. We didn't have support, it felt like, from central office. And so, how would I hold myself accountable? I would be going into every single one of our schools, hosting open forums, listening sessions, just like Dr. Taylor is doing right now. Not just community-wide, not just a Zoom session. I mean, walking into the schools and talking to these teachers, one-on-one, face-to-face, and in big meetings such as this one.
One of the first ways we hold the staff accountable is through the superintendent's evaluation. So when the board is getting together with the superintendent, we're talking about the goals, and we want, and we try to make certain that that's infused in evaluation. We hold the superintendent accountable through his evaluation. Now, how I continue to get informed and stay informed is I go into the schools, I'm talking to families, I'm out of the community, a variety of events, to learn and hear, to see if what we're trying to make certain is instituted in evaluation is actually happening on the ground.
Speaking of evaluations, I want to see our professional growth system overhauled. So many of our educational support staff members are crying out for more support. Currently, they only have three people who are able to come in and support them, and that's only after they've been in their position for six months and that they're not doing well at that position. So there are not enough people, and they want more training before they're not doing well at six months. We need to be supporting them there. Our administrators are in a very similar predicament, and they're often asking for the same support. We just had about 20% of our administrators, they're new this year. How are we supporting them?
I'd like to use some of the data coming in to determine where we can use some extra help in schools. So as far as analyzing these opportunity gaps, where we have outliers, I would like to see central office staff going into those schools and working with school staff to shore up the structure in the school, to see, do we need to retrain? Do we need more supports? So I'd like to use that.
I think one of the things that is critically important for us to do, to hold ourselves accountable for our staff, is to overhaul the way that we engage and treat people. If we want to be a destination employer, we have to be a system that people want to come to work for, and that means we have to be a system that treats people well. And I very much appreciate about Dr. Taylor, that he sees this need very acutely and agrees that this is mission-critical for us to do much better, and now it's setting up those structures to make sure staff can speak when we're not being treated well.
Yeah, I think the culture change is definitely critical, but even without that, there are things that could be done that are simple, that could have been done for quite some time. So for example, if you've ever watched a Board of Education meeting, what you'll notice is people go up and testify, and then nothing, right? They testify, it's done, now we're moving on to the next agenda item. As a person who's testified before, you know, in various spaces before, that can feel really like, did I just put this information out into the void? Is any action going to happen? What is the response? So listening, opening up communication, making sure that when emails are sent, they don't just get no response.
Listening is really important, not only to listening to our teachers and going to open forums, but also listening to administrators. Our administrators' day have a union. It's called MCAP, Montgomery County Association of Administrators and Principals. This union in particular advocated for two, they advocated for retaining SROs, and then at the elementary school level, they advocated for keeping opt-out. Our Board of Education ignored our community leaders. They ignored them. And now we have schools that are unbelievably violent, as we've seen, and then we have all this social controversy.
We regularly have meetings with our unions. Tomorrow evening, we will have a meeting with MCEA, and so that's an opportunity for us to hear firsthand how our staff feels like they are being treated on the ground in terms of working conditions. And so that is really important. We've already had one so far with SEIU Local 500, and we will have our third one with our Principals Association. So that's a very good opportunity for us to stay engaged. We do that on an annual basis in addition to in-between time throughout the year.
If we want to hear from staff at a board level, then perhaps our board meetings shouldn't occur while they're working. I can't attend any board meetings with my current position because I'm still instructing students while doing so. It is extremely disappointing to have some of the greatest decisions about my job being made, and I don't even get to show up and testify and have a voice. It's really disappointing. And to think that it could be simply done by changing the times that we host our meetings, to be done by changing the locations and where we have them, so more people can show up and interact, we can do that.
I still want to look at the Office of Human Resources and Development as well and check in, because that office is where there was enough weakness in the policies that allowed a bad actor to do acts and create havoc in our school system. So let's go back, check in, make sure all of those systems are working correctly, and also build out the department, and not make it a place where we put some people there that can't teach or be in administrative positions anymore.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, as a former MCPS teacher myself, I have frequently said that MCPS needs to do far less telling and far more asking of our boots-on-the-ground staff, because they are uniquely wise as to what's working and what's not in the classroom. And I really appreciate the opportunity that I have to actually go into schools alongside our teachers and just be with them for a day and see. They bring great ideas forward that would make their workload better, their work more efficient, and we need to listen to them.
Ms. Montoya?
Making sure that our communication is strong. As someone who's endorsed by the Teachers Union, I am the teacher's choice to lead in this seat. I'm very aware of the needs that they have and of all the unions, right? We have SEIU, which is the representative of our in-school staff, MCAP, which is our administrator staff. But we also know that not everybody always agrees, just like in any organization. So we want to make sure we're reaching all of our teachers, staff, and administrators to find a way for them to give their voice, because as Ms. Zimmerman said, so often these meetings are held, when they're not even able to attend or to do so would cause greater challenges in their school because they need substitutes.
Thank you. And our last stakeholder group is the community. As elected officials, the community at large is entrusting you with the education of our future citizens. There are many people in our county who do not have children in the school system, but will be voting for you. How will you be accountable to them?
I think we need to be accountable to them by demonstrating in everything that we do. We've got to stop saying we're going to build trust and start just being trustworthy, and demonstrating that as we continuously work to improve our school system, that we are creating the conditions that allow us to provide the next generation of our workforce, our healthcare workers, our teachers, that we are creating the conditions to prepare them truly for college, career, and community, and encourage them to come back to us.
I'll request an audit of our finances. We need to see what's going on with this money, where it's going. It is a lot of money. Are costs high? Absolutely. So we likely also need additional monies. But we know that we are wasting some, and that absolutely affects our community, because it's your money. It's your tax dollars. Whenever people talk about needing more money, where do they go to? Property taxes. I don't think, I've yet to meet anyone who wants their property taxes raised, irrespective of your socioeconomic class. So I think that, you know, when you talk about accountability, it goes back to making sure that the books are right.
I want to agree with Ms. Montoya on that, that making sure that our budget, line item by line item, I want to connect back to our students. I want us to be able to make sure that all of our contracts are being paid out in appropriate ways, that we're not wasting any spending there, because that's something that can go back to our students, go back to our classrooms, hire these other educators, paraeducators, bus drivers that we so desperately need. So I absolutely want to agree with that. That's part of how we're accountable to the community, is by making sure our budget is sound.
It also means that we have to go into places and spaces that we never go into really explain our budget. People need to understand that a $3.3 billion budget, 90% of it is salaries and benefits. And we only have 10% to make choices and decisions around how we're going to best support and educate our students. So I think it's incumbent upon the board to do that. As the Chair of the Communication Stakeholder Engagement Committee, I have challenged our committee, we will be going out into the community this year to host two meetings. It won't be titled as the Communication Stakeholder Engagement Committee, so that our other colleagues can attend, but we will be going out in places and spaces that we've never been before. So please stay tuned.
Thank you.
We also need to work with other decision-makers. They're also part of our community. So the county council, they had surprises at the end of the budget negotiations. They learned things, they learned it from the dais, which that's not really appropriate. We need to be working hand-in-hand with our county council. So let's make sure that we build that, that community with them. And also, yes, I think I'm done. Thanks.
So I think it's really important that we meet with all constituencies in Montgomery County. We live in a very diverse county, very diverse community, and there are a number of different voices within it. So we need to be with everyone, whether or not we agree with them or not. We have people who are sitting here who did not attend forums, my opponent, because she didn't agree with their point of view. I'm not going to do that. I will never do that. I will always speak with everyone, no matter who you are. I want to know what you have to say. And that's how I'm going to keep myself accountable to the community.
Because I was addressed directly, I do want to bring up that I was at an event with my students that evening.
You know, one of the things I deeply appreciate about our community is that so many organizations partner with MCPS to help provide opportunities for our students, out of school-time activities, in-school-time activities, mental wellness supports. And we have not always been a very good partner to our partners. And so that is one of the things that we're working on now, is a wholesale workflow analysis inside MCPS, so we are a better partner, whether it's a procurement item, a contract, a grant, an MOU. Those things need to be done efficiently, according to industry standards.
And I think in that vein, I would like to also then call for greater transparency, which we've kind of heard as an overall theme here. But, you know, I was actually looking at the budget earlier today, all 377 pages of it. And when you go department by department, office by office, what you see a lot of times is something like consulting, other contracts. I have no idea what any of that is, but I'll tell you, if you add all those numbers up, it's a lot of money. So when we talk about explaining, it's not just about, do the numbers add up in each of the columns? It's what is that number and what does it do?
So Ms. Rita Montoya is referencing something really important. Earlier this year, Montgomery County Taxpayers League had a Budgetpalooza, where they identified hundreds of millions of dollars that are only labeled as other, and we have no idea what they are. But that was work that was put together by the Montgomery County Taxpayers League. We also have other organizations such as moderately MOCO, Montgomery Perspective, and the Parents Coalition, who are constantly bringing Montgomery County Public Schools and the Board of Education to task. We need to listen to those people.
We also need to work with other community partners, so NAACP, Black and Brown Coalition, MCCPTA. We need to check in with organizations early and often, and sometimes that doesn't happen. Instance, we had the RFP for the Boundary Study that came out, and there was a timeline attached to that. I immediately had problems with the timeline, because the report was due two weeks before the superintendent makes his decision. So let's check in with partners to avoid those mistakes.
Ms. Zimmerman or Ms. Evans?
I heard it mentioned by Ms. Evans, this idea of places and spaces we've never been before. And I think part of that, too, is kind of shining a light on some of the darkest parts of MCPS. We have some data that isn't good. We have some things that have happened that aren't good, but we're instead trying to hold those in and hide them. But if we have these things that aren't going well, if we don't bring them to light, if we don't bring them up at the board table and say, this isn't going well, and how are we planning to fix it, then it's never going to get fixed. So that's something that we absolutely need to be doing and changing.
So I always say, education is everyone's business, and it's important that people do understand our budget and know the needs of the school system, because all of the things that are expected of the school system cannot be carried and should be shared with the school system alone. We need the help of all of our partners to do this work. We have great partners that have been doing the work, but I'm certain that if more people did understand and know what's going on in our school system, that they could take part and step in and help. And so I am very committed to making certain that our parents understand and know what's going on in our school system.
All right. Thank you all. It has been a long evening. We appreciate everyone who has made it out. And just in case there's anything left to be said, we'll invite the candidates to give a 30-second closing. And let's start at the opposite end of the table. Ms. Stewart?
First of all, I want to thank you all for being here, and if you're online, thank you so much. I'm just a really passionate advocate for our system. To tell you truth, I was worried about what has been happening over the last couple of years. It took a lot for me to put my name in to actually run. I thank Shebra for her service for the past eight years. It was during some difficult times. And I honor that the board did their best under difficult circumstances. But it's time with the new superintendent. We have fresh voices, and we move forward. So I hope you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to voteshebraevans.com to learn more about me. I am steady leadership. I have done this work for eight years, and I've worked with three superintendents. I mentioned earlier all the leadership roles that I've served in, but I want to state that I was able to serve in those roles because of the confidence that my colleagues had in me to be able to see me to do that work. And so I want to return. I am very committed. I know how to work through change. I have been in difficult times and made a change and put us in the right direction. And I want to continue to do that work, and I can do so with your support and vote on November the 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman.
Yeah. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out here. I really appreciate it, especially on a school night, as I'm acutely aware of. I am proud to be the only candidate up on this stage that is endorsed both by the educators, the MCEA Education Association, but I am also endorsed by the educational support staff. And I'm proud that my coworkers, that they believe in me and that they want to see someone speaking from the classroom on the Board of Education. I hope that you'll join me at ZimmermanforBOE.com. Thank you.
Ms. Diaz?
My life's blood, my mission, my entire adult life has been dedicated to children at every step, at every level, from pre-K to elementary school to middle school to high school. This is my life. This is what I do. I am here to represent teachers, parents, families, students, as the independent voice on the Board of Education. I will represent I will represent you, I will represent your interests. You can come to me, and I will speak for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya?
When the house is on fire, we don't sit there and watch it burn, right? It's all hands on deck, and that's what our kids need right now. If we want our kids to be the leaders in 15 to 20 years, then we have to invest in our kids. You can learn more about me at montoyaformcps.com. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you all. I am very proud of the work that the board has done over the past year to lead the school system through a time of crisis, try to keep things focused on what's important, which is what's happening in the classroom, and not get distracted, and to move, make a necessary leadership change and create the conditions for a robust nationwide search for a superintendent that yielded an amazing field of candidates and a great result. I am very confident in Dr. Taylor. I am proud to be working alongside him, and I want to continue to do that work, and I thank you so much for considering me.
Thank you. And I'd like to point out, quite obviously, that we have all women candidates, and I remember a few years ago, no disrespect to Mr. Barclay, former Board of Education member, that there was such a question, like, how is the board going to work when there's all women on the board? What is going to happen? So as a woman, I'm excited to see candidates, not only for the Board of Education, but women up and down the ballot, from the top to the bottom. As a woman of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the first black sorority for women, I'm excited to see the progress of women, and we encourage you all to go out and vote, however you're going to vote, by ballot, vote early, vote on November 5th, and we thank Mount Calvary Baptist Church for hosting us this evening, and thank you all for coming out. Thank you.[1793.61][1793.61]